Call the meeting order at 7:05. And we'll start with the Pledge of the Legion.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation undergone indivisible liberty and justice for all.
All right, first on the agenda is an opportunity for the citizens to speak. Does anyone like to address the committee?
Hi, Deb Evans, 12 Porter Street in Wenham. I have two comments to make and I will make them brief. First, I would like to thank Dr. Harvey for his tireless efforts to lead our district. Your efforts have put us on solid footing and got us going back in the right direction and I have an enormous debt of gratitude to you for that. Certainly, Hamilton Wenham's loss is masking on its gain. I'm sure we all wish you all the best even though you're going to Masco, so I don't know what to do about that. But my hope is that your fantastic leadership team that you have put in place that came to work with you can hold down the fort until your very large shoes are filled. Second, on a very unrelated topic but certainly about the district, I'd like to comment about the budget and specifically what happened at Wenham's town meeting. One of the most important responsibilities I saw as a school committee member, and I hope you will agree, is to create and vote an annual budget for the district. With excellent work from your leadership team and countless hours of discussion at your meetings around that table, the budget was created and I believe it was unanimously approved by the committee sitting around the table. Further, the school committee's responsibility is also to communicate the budget to your constituents and to gain support for the budget that you're putting forward and that you voted in support of. This is where I'm completely confused and really angry about what happened in Wenham. The operational override for the school only in Wenham was a big surprise to me a few days before a town meeting. I have to say after leaving the committee, I haven't watched your meetings every week or every other week as you meet, but I do feel like I try to keep informed and it was a huge surprise to me. The way Wenham funded the schools was a radical departure from past practice. I know this, I sat on this committee and I also sat on the finance committee. It's not been done that way in the past. That really isn't your responsibility, but what is, I take issue with, is the committee's complete failure to raise the issue and to get support from the larger community that elected you to your roles. We all know that support exists from the advocacy we've done in the past. We've passed a lot of overrides in these towns and that's certainly been an issue. This committee never asked for help. That I just don't understand. Mike and Jeff did an excellent job preparing for town meeting. David took a leadership role to defend the budget as best he could and boldly attempted to get funding for the budget without an operational override. There were four Wenham School Committee members at Wenham Town Meeting and only one spoke. Where were your voices? Your silence, I found it, to imply a lack of support for the budget that you created, you supported, as well as a failure to advocate for the necessary funding, level services funding for our schools. We're asking for nothing more. In fact, someone I know well in town stood up at the microphone and said it appeared that the schools were gaming the town when in fact, the complete opposite was true. You allowed that to happen. You allowed that perception. I see it as the school committee's obligation to defend the budget that you created and supported, inform your constituents about it in advance, educate the town meeting about issues such as the enrollment shift that nobody stood up to talk about with any valid information, and to correct misinformation such as the OPAP information provided by Mr. Cheeseman that was completely inaccurate. None of that happened. None of it. Obviously, I'm quite disgusted and disappointed. I spent years on this committee with all people like you getting the budget ratcheted down and the district moving forward and I feel like we took a huge step back last weekend. I challenge you to use your voice to get the budget you created, you unanimously supported, funded at the polls tomorrow in Wenham. You need to get talking, it's not too late, you need to start communicating. That's what you were elected to do when you were elected as a member of the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee. Thank you.
All right, do we have anyone else like to address?
Okay, thank you. Moving on, Chair's report. One thing I'd like to say as Chair is, this could be my final meeting as a school committee member and as the Chair, and I've actually just had the privilege of serving this community for the past three years has been amazing and I want to thank everybody for their support over the past three years. And, excuse me, we'll see how tomorrow goes and how the next three years look. So, just thank you for the opportunity and thank you for this board in voting me in as Chair this year and believing in me. Mike?
First off, my report, we want to congratulate our 2019 Massachusetts History Day state winners. On Saturday, April 6th, the high school and the middle school had students compete against 52 other schools from Massachusetts. Three of our projects advancing to the National History Day contest which will be held at the University of Maryland in June. The theme for this year was Triumph in Tragedy in History and we want to thank the teachers who have worked closely with our students since September on these research projects and namely Kristen Borges, Vinnie Bucci, Brett Burnett, Johan Canetz, and Tyler Walker. Read through the awards from the state competition. For second place for individual website was Nora Sullivan Horner, whose project was called "We Have Dared to Be Free: The Forgotten Haitian Revolution." For group documentary, we had a group take first place and that's Charlene Fibby, Grant Landon, and Chloe Ting. And their project was called "Tearing Them Apart: The Tragic Conflict of Boston Busing." And in group performance, we had an honorable mention. And this also won a special award from the USS Constitution Museum for the Best Project in Maritime History and this was Dominic Brown, Xander Favaza, Broderick Kelly, Connor Ryan, and Chris Sulewski, "The Triumph and Tragedy of the Titanic." And from the middle school, we had a special award for the Best Project in African-American History, went to Olivia Sulman for her project, "Little Rock Nine: Triumph and Tragedy of Integration." So, congratulations and good luck in the Nationals. And then, next up, just a reminder that tomorrow is Election Day in Hamilton and Wenham and voting will take place at the rec center in Hamilton on 16 Union Street and at Town Hall in Wenham, 138 Main Street. The polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Included on the ballot are candidates for three seats on the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee and in Wenham, a ballot question on a Prop 2.5 override to fund the FY '20 operating budget. Please remember to get out and vote.
Thanks, Mike. Now, moving on to the consent agenda, we have minutes from February 27th, March 13th, and warrants from March 29th.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the consent agenda with minutes from February 27th, 2019, minutes from March 13th, 2019, and warrants from March 29th, 2019. There can be no changes.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, on to new business. First thing we have up is the winter sports recognition.
I'm going to ask Athletic Director Craig Genualda to come on up and introduce the athletes and teams if they're here tonight.
Good evening and thank you for having us. I'd like to echo what others have said before for your contributions and support of the high school, especially and particularly the athletic program. We know that a lot of things are not easy to get taken care of and we appreciate the work and the thoughtfulness and all the support that you provide us. When we do this seasonally, we generally honor a lot of teams. As you may know, I'm not big on individual achievement in athletics. We're more focused on teams and community and spirit and stuff like that, but we do have, in addition to one team that we are going to honor here tonight, we have three incredibly unique individuals who I'll call up one at a time and give you a little bit of their background. And the reason why we chose to kind of depart from the norm is that their achievements were truly, truly remarkable at an elite level. And what's best about the student athletes that we'll present to you tonight is that most of all, they're emblematic of their teams. Their captains, their leaders, their servant leaders, none of the student athletes on either the team we'll introduce you to or the individuals we'll introduce you to would ever be considered braggarts. They're humble and they care about their teammates and their team's success well before their own. So, in introducing them as individuals, I wanted to have that as the backdrop so you could get a sense of their character and a sense of who they are as true student athletes. So, we'll introduce the individuals first for the time. Our first individual, Calvin, if you could come up here. Our first individual is Calvin Dalton. Calvin is a wrestler and you might say, I didn't know Hamilton Wenham has a wrestling team. We are a guest in a cooperative agreement with Salem High School. Calvin came to my office the first day of ninth grade and knocked on my door and said, "Hey, you don't have wrestling. What's up with that?" And wasn't real thrilled about it. And at the time, we had an agreement with Salem, whose program had grown so much that they were going to kind of cut us to the curb a little bit. They were wonderful hosts for years, but they just couldn't host us with their numbers. So, we hooked up with Salem. I know Calvin knows the Salem Athletic Director pretty well, Mr. Scott Conley, who we're incredibly grateful to. And this year, Calvin was the Division II North Sectional Individual Champ as well as the Division II Statewide Champion. It's an incredible accomplishment and I'm going to have him introduce himself to you right now.
Yeah, my name is Calvin. I'm a junior this year, so plans for next year is just to keep wrestling and I just want to say thank you for recognizing me and getting the co-op done. That was awesome, so thank you.
Wrestling's always scared me. I was always scared they would put me into a pretzel. So, I shake Calvin's hand but cautiously. The next student athlete I would like to bring up here is Clint Gordo. Clint is a senior this year and is a member of our soccer, hockey, and boys' lacrosse teams, but he's up here tonight for his contribution to the hockey program. He was one of the founding members when we brought our program back five years ago and started as a JV team. He was an eighth grader on that team. I think we scored a few goals that year. We would play teams that had some sophomores on them and, you know, I have an eighth grader and thinking about him playing against a kid like Calvin is horrifying. And, you know, Clint was one of the founding members that played all five years through the first year of varsity when we went 0-18 and 2. Last year when we finally qualified for the tournament by the skin of our teeth and this year when we won our first tournament game. But Clint is here because he was the, I don't know, I think it's District A, MIAA statewide sportsmanship award winner. He was recognized before the game with the Boston Bruins. I think it was Bob Sweeney or Don Sweeney you took the picture with. I don't remember which Sweeney it was, but certainly a phenomenal Bruin from back in the day. And when we say Clint couldn't be more emblematic of his teammates, Clint was among a handful of kids that were the heart and soul of that team. After their last loss this year, one of the juniors got up in a very emotional state and talked about the legacy that Clint and his classmates had set and how they had to pick up the torch and carry on and anything they did would be in honor of Clint and his buddy. So, I'm going to let Clint introduce himself to you.
Yeah, so as Mr. Genualda said, my name's Clint Gordo. Next year, I'll be going off to Union College. I'll be playing lacrosse and, you know, I've been lucky enough to have two great parents and a handful of very good coaches to help me along the way, so I just wanted to say thank you to them and thank you to you guys for recognizing me as well. Appreciate it.
Our final student athlete award winner is also a three-sport captain. He was the league MVP in football and was recognized as part of that team in the fall. This was the first year in his four-year starting career when the basketball team did not win the league title, but he may have played a bigger leadership role than ever this year. He was the first basketball player to score 1,000 points in at least 25 years. We're not sure how many people exactly have scored 1,000 points, but it's on one hand in the history of our school. So, well, like Billy, you know, why don't you come up and then, sorry, I forgot to introduce myself. So, Billy was the Salem Evening News, Hamilton Wenham representative for Student Athlete of the Year. He has incredible grades. I've been, you know, he's a very mild-mannered kid. He's one of the sweetest kids you'll ever meet. He probably doesn't want me to say that, he'd get embarrassed. But he's kind, he shakes people's hands, but I've been fortunate enough, whether it's in basketball or football especially, to be right there during game time. And he's a beast. The way he inspires his teammates through just sheer force of leadership and the ability to get everything out of who he is and put it not into himself but into his teammates in the game is remarkable. A guy, he's set all kinds of individual records, but he's the best team guy I've seen here in a while. So, I'm going to let Billy Whalen introduce himself.
Hello, I'm Billy Whalen. Next year, I'm doing a postgraduate year at Williston North Hampton School in East Hampton. I'm playing basketball and tennis there. I also wanted to thank Mr. Genualda for all the kind words. He's been super supportive through the past four years, whether it's tennis, basketball, or football. I also want to say thank you to all of you for the tireless work you guys do to keep our schools in good hands. And thank you, Mr. Harvey, for all your work. I remember teaching yoga to you in sophomore year. So, thank you for all your work and we're all going to miss you. Thank you.
Finally, I would like to bring up our team that we would like to recognize tonight. Our gymnastics team before last year hadn't won a match in a while. There was a couple of years where we were a junior varsity level team just because we didn't have numbers. And along came Coach Chris, who was a coach for us about 10 or 12 years ago and then returned and for the second year in a row, won League Coach of the Year and led us to the league championship. I'm going to let him introduce the representatives of his team tonight. So, Chris, come on.
I wanted to thank Craig. He's been inspirational, he's been very supportive of the team as well as the parents and the school committee. We're grateful that you have stuck with us all these years and allowed us to continue this program. I think it's very important for the kids in high school to receive some recognition. Gymnastics is very much an individual sport, but in high school however, it completely turns around and becomes a team sport and it really provides them with all the benefits of a team competition. So, I just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of my heart that you've stuck with us. This evening, I brought two of our special athletes. This is Abby Bennet. She was a freshman this year, outstanding beam performer, finished in the top 10 in our league championship. And we have returning again Tess Richard, all-around performer, one of our top all-arounds in the league. We expect some good things from her coming next year. She was a sophomore this year, right? And so, she'll be a junior next year and I think both of them have a very strong shot at making it to state finals. We were also blessed to have Annika Dolan, a top all-around that's graduating this year, Rose Wospeka, and Avery Litka, Rachel Lee, Ellie Pitkin. And where's the last one? How can I forget? Audrey Fusco. Audrey Fusco did a fantastic job. She had never done gymnastics in her life and she ended up competing on two events with her scores counting towards the team total. We're very proud of our girls. Last year, our highest team total was a 117. This year, our high team total was a 125. So, excuse me, 127. Okay, so we increased it by 10 points. We hope to do the same next year. We have some up-and-coming stars from Iron Rail Gymnastics Academy and I would be remiss if I didn't thank Rich Healy for all of his work. Without his continued efforts, we wouldn't really have a program because the girls train over there, the girls compete over there, and he offers his facility and his time to us, so lots of thanks go out to him as well. Our parents have been very supportive as well and I'd really like to thank them. They've done a tremendous job.
Did your girls want to say?
They're shy, but they're very dedicated and hard workers. Gymnastics is a tough sport. Both of them fought through injuries this year that kind of curtailed their performance in the early part of the season, but through perseverance and courage, they were able to end up doing well and we ended up winning the league championship, second year in a row. Last year, we were 4-1, this year we're 5-0. So, we're very pleased with that performance and with how the girls did. Again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for having us. I will say, I'm not a very good gymnastics fan. I root very hard for you, but I watch them like this because when they jump out, I get very scared and I'm probably freaking people out, so I kind of just stand in the back and hope I don't distract anyone. Thank you very much for having us. We're very grateful. We know you're very busy and so thank you for taking time out of your evening for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Excuse me. What's that? So, you are free to leave at this point.
Go study.
So, up next, Brad Hill has come by to give us an update on what's been going on in the, Brad, do you want to come up here? So, I know things, Brad gave me a call a little bit earlier and said things got a little bit, didn't go as planned quite today, but I figured it'd still be a good idea for him to come in and give us an update on what's going on and how it affects our district.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman, thank you for reaching out and having me here tonight. It's very time appropriate as the state budget of the House just came out today, early this morning around 10:30 to be exact. And I'm happy to report, I know over the last few years, I come in here and sometimes I'm deemed to be the grim reaper because we're not bringing as much education funding as we would hope. This year, total opposite. We're actually, for the first time in decades, education is a top priority of the House, the Senate, and the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. In the governor's budget, they actually had proposed increases to all the accounts that we care about, the three big ones, Chapter 70, regional school transportation, and the Special Education Circuit Breaker line item. And I'm happy to report that the House actually has increased his proposals by a lot. So, Chapter 70, for example, whereas last year you got 3.6 million, you're going to actually get about 3.7 million this year. And the amount of money that we put in over the governor is about almost $25 million above and beyond what he had proposed. The regional school transportation line item is an item that we hear about over and over and over, how we need to keep the promise that we made decades ago about fully funding the program. And as you know, in past years, we've actually gotten as low as 65% reimbursement. Because of your advocacy, and I do mean that, over the last two years, joining with other regional school districts, you were heard loud and clear. And this proposal actually proposes to fund that line item at an 80% reimbursement, which is up considerably over what the governor had proposed and what we had envisioned happening. Just to let you know, the regional school caucus members, which I of course am part of, we've actually sent a letter to the Chair asking for 100%, but knowing full well, we probably won't get to that number because of what we're going to talk about in just a couple of minutes. So, thank you for your advocacy and you need to know that a lot of the advocacy that took place to get these numbers up was your superintendent. Two to three years ago, the legislators on the North Shore and part of Merrimack Valley reached out to our superintendents and said, "We can't do this alone. We need advocacy and your voice to be part of the debate of education." And we created the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable. And from those meetings, which happened four to five times a year, so quarterly, we meet and we discuss certain issues and how together we can go and advocate on your behalf. The Superintendent's Roundtable has been an incredible partner for all the North Shore legislators and Merrimack Valley and their voice has been heard. They come to the State House and they actually testify before hearings, before committees, and they bring the passion that we bring and that you bring to the table. And it's been incredibly helpful to us and you're starting to see the fruits of that labor in the line items that we have discussed. Special Education Circuit Breaker, the last couple of years, there's been some snafus with it. We underfunded it by mistake. If you remember, last year I came before you, we had not gotten accurate numbers from the school districts of what we needed to fund that. Mid-year, I actually offered an amendment to the supplemental budget and it was accepted over two different supplemental budgets to get you back up to where you should be. And in this year's budget, it's being proposed to be funded at the 100% of the 75% number. So, I'm happy that the numbers that we see in this budget without amendments, this just came out today, so we're going to be offering amendments next week and then debating the budget two weeks from this past Monday. But before that process even started, we actually got to the numbers that you asked us for, which is incredible. That doesn't usually happen, but it shows you that the leadership of the House, Senate, and administration, that education is finally at the top of the priority list, which is fantastic for the entire Commonwealth. But what I'm here tonight to also warn you, or red flag, is that a lot of you, I believe, have been receiving information from various groups throughout the Commonwealth about the proposal to change the Chapter 70 formula. As you remember, for those who don't, we, we being a lot of the North Shore legislators, had asked that a foundation review- had asked that a foundation review commission take place to look at Chapter 70 after almost 25 years of not looking at it. From those recommendations, they argued that we needed to look at special education funding, we needed to look at healthcare costs, we needed to look at English learners, and we needed to look at low income, and we needed to implement those as part of the formula that is not currently happening. So, we were thrilled that the commission took place and that they made these recommendations. And if you remember last year, when I came before you, I said in order to implement those changes, it would be upward to the cost of, to about $2 billion. However, we need to implement those changes. And what's discouraging, and this is the red flag I'm waving, is that many of the proposals that you have been asked to support, either via resolution or publicly, actually are going to end up hurting districts like Hamilton-Wenham and Masconomic and Triton and Manchester-Essigs. And the reason that that might happen and probably will happen is that we're going to have to phase in those recommendations over a five or seven-year period. And what's being recommended, at least in the governor's proposal and the Senate proposal, is that we would look at putting the ELL and low-income piece first. We would front-load those two pieces of it with minimum of special education and healthcare. And because of the dynamics or economics of it all, 15% of the monies would come to districts like Hamilton-Wenham, 85% would end up going to about 15 or 20 school districts under the proposals that are before us. So, I'm urging you to be very careful that when you're asked to support these three initiatives, that you really look hard at what's being proposed. We will argue that we should upload or front-load it with the special education and healthcare because that affects the entire Commonwealth and that affects every school district in the Commonwealth. And we are getting feedback that that might be a good idea, but we're also having pushback from our urban friends who are screaming as much as we are about additional funding. Two of the proposals that you have been asked to support don't have any funding attached to it. They just pass it without any funding attached to it. In the budget that I just spoke to you about, we actually start funding some of those recommendations, very small, by using the, what we believe will be revenue from the Wynn Casino. That is not yet online. And as you probably have been reading in the newspapers, there's some debate taking place on whether a license will even be put forth, or if it will be sold, or if they will allow it to move forward. But in the budget, we are projecting that we will see those dollars. We also are going to be looking at allowing betting on sports events. As you probably know, the Supreme Court ruled recently that states are allowed for that to happen. For years and years, it was only in Vegas and someone took them to court, they won, and now, other states are allowing sports betting. And we believe that that should happen here in Massachusetts. I would argue to you that if that does happen, those dollars, like lottery money, should go back to local aid. That will be a debate. I also have, I have three bills pending that would allow this, but also would fund transportation needs as well. The question about that is, how would we implement such a program? Just at a casino? At a lottery? Agent? Online? It's very complicated, more complicated than it sounds because we need to make sure that we have safeguards put into place where it won't be taken advantage, of course, and cheating and things of that sort. So, I just wanted to come tonight, tell you that the education funding is a top priority. And I think in the House version of the budget, it reflects that. And moving forward, we may even add a few additional dollars to the numbers that you see from the House Ways and Means Budget. But cautiously, maybe not, because we want to start funding the Chapter 70. And we're going to not debate those changes in the budget, but instead with a freestanding bill because it's way too complicated to do during budget week because it could take up a whole week in itself on how we're going to make those changes. So, that would probably happen around July or August, but we're putting money aside just to make sure that we can start phasing in the changes that I brought to your attention. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure that there's some questions that the committee would like to ask, and I would entertain those at this time. But again, I can't thank your superintendent enough for the work that we have all done on the North Shore for these changes to happen.
So, thanks a lot for that recap. Yeah, I mean, that's a lot of stuff to go over. My start in education was in an urban setting, in town. So, like, they talk about those Chapter 70 changes. You know, I can definitely see the need in those, in those areas and why, you know, they're sort of the squeaky wheel. I love the idea of knowing that, you know, healthcare and special ed is something that touches every single district and, you know, would definitely appreciate the efforts you're making in moving those to the top of the list. Right now, I'm still trying to really get through everything that you just said. There's definitely some really good news that came in, and so, I appreciate that. But I'll just sort of open the floor at this point to anyone else who actually has any questions for you while I sort of digest some of this information.
So, was it last year that we went and we saw the auditor's, auditor bumps report?
So, on regional school transportation at Triton?
Yes. So, at that particular meeting, you did a lot of speaking about the, getting the casino money specifically tied to education. How is that coming along and is there something we should be doing to advocate for that?
So, that debate is still ongoing and I think what we need to do is we need, I'll get you the information of who we need to advocate to.
Yep.
But it's going to be more now with the sports betting than it is the casinos.
Okay.
There's already, if you look at the casino bills that were passed into law, there's actually sections that funnel money into education, but it's a gray area. It doesn't say exactly where the money's going, how it would be distributed. We need to amend that where it specifically says it's coming into these parts of money. Now, regional transportation, and I'm glad you brought this up, we actually know that transportation cost is what's killing school districts, especially urban, excuse me, suburban school districts, and especially in the special education transportation line items. And by the way, for those listening at home and who don't know this, transportation isn't part of the special education circuit breaker.
Right.
It's just the services itself. So, I'm actually on a commission that was created in last year's budget that's looking specifically at transportation cost for all education transportation. So, getting them from point A to point B within Hamilton-Wenham, special education cost, homeless cost, we are going around the entire state. And by the way, it's a commission set up like the Foundation Review Commission that's really looking at the soups and nuts. We're bringing in professionals. The commission has all types of people on it, professionals within the transportation world, DESE, private owners, blah, blah, blah. And we hope to come out with a report
Yep.
...that's going to help us and show us how we can do a better job of funding school transportation. Now, a regional school district, as you know, gets the regional transportation. A district like Ipswich does not.
Right.
And they are getting killed by not having that help. So, we need to look at, is there an equitable issue that needs to be looked at in terms of freestanding school districts as compared to regional? We know why the regional school transportation was set up. It was the carrot that said, "If you join, we'll help you with transportation."
Right.
But over time, you know, those expenses have gotten huge. So, my hope is by the end of the year, we're going to have a report similar to the Foundation Review Commission that will look at how we can help you with that.
Yep.
But, to answer your direct question, it's going to be more of a debate for the betting than it is for the casino bill.
And when would that happen?
So, that's probably going to happen August and September.
Okay.
We need to do it sooner rather than later because other states surrounding us have already started. And even though you read in the newspaper they're not hitting the revenue benchmarks that they had put out, they're still getting more money than they were getting.
Getting more than zero.
And I think here in Boston area, for whatever reason, we like to gamble. As you can tell, we have one of the best lotteries, you know, in the nation, if not the country, the world. So, we need to, we need to make it happen sooner rather than later. And we want to make sure, I want to make sure it's in place for the football season
Yep.
because that's the bulk. We just missed the NCAAs, whereas Rhode Island had that opportunity to have the bets done in the final NCAA tournament.
And so, how do we go about supporting you in, you know, amending these, the Cherish and the Promise Act so that they do help us because, like you said, we all deal with healthcare and if there was single payer healthcare, this country wouldn't be a problem. But how do we go about
So...
...helping you advocate for getting those bills amended, changed, or introduced differently?
Yep. So, very similarly to what we just did with regional school transportation and special education circuit breaker, you need to join with other regional school districts and be a bigger voice than just one.
Yep.
And my recommendation to you all is to reach out to the Triton Regional School District. They have a school committee member, her name is Nerissa Wallin, who knows this inside and out and can explain to you how these proposals are going to hurt regional school districts. And if we can start going back to the State House, she's been at all the hearings in the last few weeks
Yep.
as has some of the North Shore superintendents. But it would be more helpful if, if during the hearing, which turned into a rah-rah for the Promise Act, instead of getting into the nuts and bolts, it would have been nice if we had 30 or 40 school districts who said, "Hold on, Madam Chair and Mr. Chair, we have some issues here that need to be addressed." That didn't happen. With that said, the House Chair has been, is Alice Peisch, who's done a wonderful job of understanding the suburban versus urban fight.
Okay.
But, we need to be a louder voice than what we're hearing. If you think back a year ago, we all were sitting around this table saying, "We want to see those recommendations adopted. Rep Hill, get up there and make sure they're adopted." Well, now that we're peeling back the onion, we're seeing that once the foundation budget increases per student, all of a sudden, your chapter, your
Circuit breaker goes down.
Circuit breaker, special ed goes down because you're increasing the student cost. And for a Hamilton-Wenham or a Triton, you're going to get killed
Lose money on that.
...with that. And we need to hear that as one voice. And she started this and she reached out to some of her Western school districts, she's reached out to the Cape. And that's, you know, again, last year during the budget, we must have heard from 100 school districts, "We need regional school transportation and we need special ed." And guess what? We listened and we heard
Yep.
loud and clear. And so did our leaders. And as you can see now, moving forward, they really heard.
Right.
But I would argue, you almost should have a meeting
Yeah, like where we used to have those regional coalition meetings, yeah. Okay.
So, that would be my recommendation. And really and truly, if you're into nuts and bolts of funding education, you really should have her come and speak to your group.
Yep.
I was actually going to ask you about that unintended consequence of Chapter 70 reform. Brian Ford did a really great analysis
Yes.
of that. And it showed, a lot of us stand to lose even though we're in the hold harmless category.
Right.
Which is concerning.
And I didn't mention, and thank you for bringing up the word "hold harmless," the minimum aid in the House budget went from $20 proposal to $30 a student. So, again, we increased the minimum aid as well. But, the hold harmless communities, they are going to get crushed
On the circuit breaker.
When this, if this goes through as people want to see it. And again, it sounds great.
They have great names, too.
You know? The Promise Act. You're going to get $400,000, $500,000 if you pass the Promise Act. They don't tell you, "It takes 10 years to get the $500,000." Doesn't happen in one fiscal year with no money attached to it. We're working those details out. I urge you more than ever to join your fellow regional school districts and start screaming at us that these changes are going to hurt you in a way that we didn't intend.
Yep.
You know, I'm, as an elected official, I vote against this and, you know, next year, I have an opponent, "Well, you voted against education." I voted against something because it hurt my district, but you can't sell that product.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
So, we're working very well, I hope, together to come up with something. And I think funding these line items helps a lot.
Well, yeah, because I just, we're looking at like double the increase, almost triple the increase from previous year, so...
Yes.
Not that it's a lot of money. It's like, it's like a teacher and a half.
Well, you know, it's frustrating when you see, even with the governor's proposal, which he implements, he starts a seven-year program to implement all four of these. We put in $200 million, inflationary costs included in that. Hamilton-Wenham is going to see about $42,000 to $46,000 of that $200 million. So, we're really not fixing a lot unless we look at the ability to pay, which the foundation commission did not look at. They looked at, they looked at it all, but these were the recommendations for now. And we need to come back and take a look at that as well. Sorry to be long-winded, Mr. Chairman.
No, I don't think you're long-winded at all. I thought you were doing a really great job of sort of explaining what's going on because I know a lot of people were saying that, well, we have these things coming out that are going to help our district and, you know, in, sure, but, you know, at the time, again, I think we were guessing, and I was speaking to Dr. Harvey earlier in the year, at about $40,000. And, yeah, sure, $40,000 is better than nothing, but in the grand scheme of things, you know, you're in the process of approving a $34 million budget. That $40,000 isn't even one FT position. Excuse me. I'm sort of a little worried, I think you did a good job of lighting the worry fire here about, you know, if this proposal goes through, or, you know, what are we looking at for a timeline where something can be passed through that really is going to hurt our district, you know, immediately, whether it be this budget, next budget, you know, or coming up? You know, is this current proposal at a stage where you think it's going to pass and these regional districts are going to take immediate hits? Or, you know, I'm looking for a timeframe a little bit.
So, we met with Jason Lewis, who's the Chair of the Senate on today, oh my God, today's Wednesday.
Wednesday.
So, on Monday morning, sorry. And he really is looking to try and do something by August. The House and the Senate have very different thoughts about what we should do moving forward. If you remember last year, the House passed its version, the Senate passed a similar version to what they want now, and we couldn't come to consensus.
Right.
Right.
And this year, we can't let that happen. And I think the House side is recognizing that there is an issue with our suburban communities that needs to be addressed. I wish I could tell you tonight what the answer is. I can't
Right.
because we're working through that. Do we fully fund all of these programs and then pass the proposal that's before us now to help the urban? And let me just remind folks, too, that something that isn't considered, that's frustrating to me as your rep, is you don't get to apply for grants that the city and urban schools get to apply for. So, we heard from the Boston delegation about the behavioral issues within its district and how we need to do a better job of helping those individuals. Well, quite frankly, they get millions of dollars in federal grants to help with that. That we have three or four of those, just throwing that number out, I don't know how many you have, but three or four of those kids, and that's a budget buster.
Right.
I can't apply for those, they can because of the social economics of Hamilton and Wenham.
Right.
And that's not brought into account when we're putting these things together. So, we're trying to enlighten them about those issues as well.
Right. Yeah, I think that's sort of where that, that healthcare and that special Right. Yeah, I, I think that's sort of where that, that healthcare and that special ed comes into play, right? Just because we're, you know, i- i- it's everybody, right? We're, we're, we're a blessed community. I say that a lot. Um, you know, having seen both sides of, of the coin and, um, you know, even though we are in the state that we are and we have the economic resources that we do within the town, excuse me, passing these budgets do hurt, and I understand that, but a- as you said, you know, so eloquently, that, you know, you have, it doesn't take, it doesn't even take a handful of, of kids that are good kids, that deserve their right to an education, you know, to need the special help that we can't provide within the district that really is, you know, will bust our budget, um, you know, and not having those supports. I know a lot of times we'll sort of get feedback from people that aren't sitting at this table and aren't privy to the, well, don't have the discussions we're here, or aren't here to listen to the discussions we have to realize that we aren't, we don't have the availability to apply for those grants, you know, and everyone's like, "Oh, I don't apply for more grants." It's, it's because, you know, we don't qualify for a lot of them. And it's really hard for people to, to understand that. And, and even when neighboring towns that you think are, have the same, you know, like, "Oh, it's only Beverly, it's only Salem", uh, you know, but there, there's actually very dras, drastic differences in the makeup and what they can apply for that we can't, even though, you know, they're two miles or ten miles away.
Sure.
And they seem like neighbors. So, thank you, you know, for coming in and explaining that. Um, I'm not gonna thank you for some of the news you just gave me, though, so, um, but, you know, I, I appreciate all the work you do for us and all the, um, regional districts. You, you, you have the very unlucky, I think, uh, privilege of, of representing a lot of regional districts, which, uh, i- is gotta be sort of feeling like you're, you're taking the world, you know, the weight of the world on your shoulders. So I do appreciate the work that you do. Um, I don't know if anyone else has anything else more to say. I know quite a lot of information.
Thank you for all your work. You really do, um, support us along with our superintendent, with Dr. Harvey, um, to really try and do the best for our school district.
Um, you asked a question of how you can be helpful. We are gonna be having one of those Transportation Commission meetings on the North Shore. I would urge members of this committee to go to that. And at the very least, uh, the leadership of the administration should be at that, explaining the cost of special education to them here on the North Shore. Because we have some of the higher costs of transportation because of where our private schools are and where you send your chi, your children from Hamilton Wenham. So your cost is considerably higher than someone maybe in Lexington or Belmont or something like that. So that would be helpful, uh, and I'll let you know when that.
Do you know when that is?
Yeah. Right now, I'm basically going to New York, I think Pittsfield next week or the week after. We're going all around the state.
And one of the things that's come up with transportation, and we're in the process of doing our bid now, and I know the state was looking into this, is there's, doesn't seem to be a lot of competition in bidding.
So, uh, interesting you should bring that up because that is the number one issue that we have heard in the hearings. Um, we don't know why it's happening or how it's happening, wink, wink. And we think we're gonna try, well, we don't think, well, you know, we're gonna try and address that in the recommendations. But that seems to be the number one issue, and that is a cost driver for sure.
Right. Because there's no competition, but yet there are competing entities in close proximities to each other.
I've been to three school committee meetings in the last two weeks, and that's come up three times.
So it's interesting you say that. However, while, while we've lacked competition locally here, our prices have been extraordinarily. So there's no, you know, based on current contracts.
Sure. So, that, that may be true. The special ed piece, I would, I bet if you looked, is much higher.
No.
Really?
No. I look at it every day.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're fortunate where.
Oh, I'm glad to hear that.
Our service providers provide, you know, great service at a fairly reasonable cost, and they don't take advantage of the lack of competition.
I'm glad to hear that. That's not what I'm hearing in the others. So thank you for that information. All that we want to hear at the Commission hearing.
We do have a bid opening coming up in the next month or so. If I see something different, I'll give you a shout.
I would appreciate that. Yep. Because that's gonna be huge.
Right. Thanks Jeff for that. Anyone else? Sure, Representative Hill has had a long day and he'd like to get back home.
He was already here this weekend.
All right.
I will never miss that one.
I've had a long week, I guess.
I know, it's so much fun, isn't it? It's like so Mayberry, it's so fun.
I thank you as always for allowing me to come for a few minutes and talk about these issues. Once we get into the nitty-gritty of the three proposals added before us, I may come back in a couple of weeks and just update you on what's going on. Um, but we need to hear from you.
Yeah.
You know, if you have some ideas, just send a letter to the Chairs. That counts as testimony.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Welcome back anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for providing pocket constitution to our eighth grade civic students, as well as my students.
That was a big deal.
But I know you take care, you work with Tyler Walker to provide all the students with pocket constitutions, and it's important.
Sure is.
So thank you.
That's an easy part of my job.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you soon.
See you again soon.
All right, um, next up, you know, like, like we were just saying, i- it's been a long week already and it's not over yet. We're only halfway through it. Um, you know, I, I just want to take the time to sort of go over and debrief on what happened at the town meetings this week, and I really want to get input from everybody here. Excuse me, um, I spent the weekend talking way more than I would have liked to. And, you know, we, we sort of, I think we need to go through a, a pluses and deltas here as a committee and be able to sort of move, move forward as our, our work's still not done, right? And, you know, Wenham voted down our OPEB, and we still need to, um, have the override go through the voting tomorrow. I, I think, I don't know. I don't know how to go about this. I, I was sort of thinking, sitting here thinking that, like I said, I, I'd like to hear from everyone. But I, I think Stacy, you're the ranking member here in that you've been through the most of these town meetings and the most of budget process. How do you feel things went on Saturday and, and, you know, like your, your recap of the situation?
My recap of town meeting?
Yeah. Especially compared to how things have gone in the past.
Well, I have to say that I, I sent out my yearly email to people to come to town meeting, and it was disappointing not to have a lot of, um, I want to say, school, uh, parents turn out. There. I mean, because I looked around, I looked in to see who I sent the email to and who showed up, and I went, wow. So it was, um, it was, it was disappointing in that, that matter. And, um, somehow, I mean, I didn't get responses. I said, "If you have questions, you know, but please come to town meeting. These are what we're looking at. We need your support." And so we really didn't have the parent support like we've had in the past. And I don't know if it needed to be something like "The sky's falling", but it wasn't important enough, at least for Wenham Town Meeting, to get the parents out. But we had, I mean, at the town meeting, there was the people there who were normally at town meeting. So that, you know, that wasn't a surprise. I, you know, you see those people year in, year out. It was the parents who weren't really at town meeting this year.
So, not being a Wenham resident, I wasn't at town meeting. So, for our benef, for the Hamilton residents, can you sort of, for the benefit of them, can you sort of describe the nature of the con, of the debate that occurred around the school budget?
Yeah, I thought the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen both had supported the override part, the, for the operating budget. And, you know, there was little debate about whether or not we should approve it. There was a lot of debate about how we should approve it.
Sorry, how it should have been?
Yeah, there was little debate about whether or not we should approve it. There was a lot of debate about how we should approve it.
About how we should approve it?
Mm-hmm.
And what was the OPEB conversation like then?
That was not the same. There was a lot of conversation about, um, you know, Wenham was talking about their philosophy to, um, was to incrementally put in ten thousand to start and then increase theirs by ten thousand dollars. I think there was a number thrown around, like, our, um, liability was thirty-five million as compared to theirs, which was like five million, so seven times bigger. Um, but they just felt that it was a big bite at a quarter of a million dollars, and they, you know, that was basically what was discussed.
And that theirs was in the levy limit budget, but they pulled ours out and put it as an override.
Right. So I, I think that's part of the.
I think that wasn't clear to people in the audience that, like, I know, um, I spent a lot of years, a lot of years ago, but there was a, um, a year when, because of the way the shift was going, that Wenham wasn't willing to, was, like, Hamilton was willing to pay a certain percent, but Wenham wasn't willing to pay their fair share of that percent. And we had advocated, um, what we called a fair share, and which was that, um, because the levy limit goes up two and a half percent, that the school district should be allowed to get that two and a half percent. And so we had done a lot of education arou, we, meaning the citizenry, did a lot of education around, you know, we really wanted that fair share and did a lot of advocacy, um, on behalf of the schools with the FinCom. And I don't think that that message came out. I, I think Larry Schwartz tried to address it a little bit, um, but I don't think people understood. Like, they didn't have like a, a tagline that they could understand that the percentage that the school was getting wasn't even the amount that was raised by the school's budget in the levy. Like, I don't think that people understood that. And I don't know.
I think the only person that kind of called that out was me. And all my communications to the FinCom, to the Board of Selectmen, the slides that I prepared from Mike's presentation, and it didn't seem like anybody else was backing us. The messaging and the communication from the FinCom and the, and their presentation, um, wasn't, in my view, and this wouldn't be surprised to any of them watching, what, wasn't transparent, wasn't clear. I mean, the bottom line is they funded the town side seven point four percent and the school side point eight percent. And then took the rest of your budget, not my budget, your budget, and they bundled that into two operating overrides. While, you know.
They got everything they needed.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I, I think we failed to stand up for ourselves. And, you know, we failed the district.
No, I, I, I agree with you. I think something else that came out at, at town meeting, excuse me, when, um, FinCom was explaining the breakdown of the budget, they actually said that the, um, that the, the breakdown of the budget this year was fifty-one percent, um, schools, the, and the, the increase, I'm sorry, was fifty-one percent schools and forty-nine percent from the town. And so when the motion was made to try and move the money back into the general fund so that the override was evenly distributed amongst, um, all, you know, um, all the departments in the town and all the areas of the town, that message got lost very quick, quickly. I, I think we all know how, um, things can sort of go, go awry and off-topic as, as the commenting happens at town meeting. But I, I think that got lost really quickly and, um.
So, what do you mean by that?
I know, yeah, I don't know what you're talking about.
So I, I don't think that it was ever made clear.
Can I, might be able to help you say it?
So. Sure.
Yeah, so what they were saying.
It was used to Saturday.
Jeff, because you moved your, Jeff, because you moved your mic back, so people can't hear you yet.
Yeah. So, David, just to be clear, so, um, Saturday was about the school committee?
Right.
Um, the seven months leading up to Saturday was about me and Mike, and I think we carried it.
I apologize if you ever thought that. I was doubting you. No, 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 I didn't mean.
You just said that.
It was clear to, I did not mean that you, it was in any way unclear from you.
Okay.
I think it got lost in the room.
You said, "Where were you Saturday?" I was sitting in two seats to your right.
No, I know.
But it wasn't my job to come to the mic when there were four members of the school committee there to support the school committee's budget?
I apologize, Jeff. I didn't mean, didn't mean that anyway.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Just joking.
So, um, uh, this isn't really kind of a joking kind of matter at the moment, right? Um, but anyway, so I think what you're trying to say is that if the levy limit budget and Article Three and Article Four, the two override budgets, were all passed in conjunction with the town side funding that was provided in Article One through Article Two, free, the use of free cash, as a result, it would provide equitable funding. But that's not what happened.
Right, yep.
Right. That's what they were trying to say, but they didn't provide much clarity around any elements of the school's budget, in my view.
So, last year in the run-up to the town meetings, both Wenham, well, Wenham had a budget, it wasn't necessarily a budget hearing, but they had a budget meeting to educate the public. I was there, represented this district. I know that you were there. Um, did they, did that happen again this year?
Yes, but no one from the schools or school districts showed up.
The only person that sent a, a communication to that group was me, on behalf of Mike and I. Challenging their, uh, presentation of the articles. And I, I believe you were all on that, on those communications.
So.
How did it go in Hamilton? I'm just curious what their discussions were. Was there much discussion?
They didn't have a discussion?
No hold.
There wasn't a hold? Did you make a presentation?
Sure.
Okay.
Great.
Well, it's always iffy if they're gonna, so I was curious if they, how did you make a presentation?
I, I, they've changed it up so that actually I get to present before they actually start going through the lines.
Okay.
Um, but there was no hold on the school budget.
I will say that they took a shot at this committee, though, in a big way, with respect to its capital, the lack of a capital plan.
So when they got to that article, they had discussion around that? Or they passed over it, or what did they do? Are you saying the shot was made by the publication or actually at the meeting?
The shot was made in the FinCom's publication and then the, in the FinCom's chair's report to the board.
Okay, so that's something we should watch and be aware of.
He took a pretty hard shot, you guys.
So, at, was that, when was that, like in the beginning of the meeting? Was it?
It was Phil, uh, at the be, towards the beginning of the meeting, yeah.
I'll go back and look at it.
But it's in their, um, FinCom report as well.
Was it printed in their warrant?
It's in the warrant book.
It's in there.
All right, I'll look for it.
He read this. He pretty much read it.
He pretty much read it, yeah, yeah. Maybe not verbatim, but.
They, they clearly did not take public speaking in the Hamilton Wenham School District because they would not, it suggested reading their reports.
No, but what, Phil's remarks were very closely followed, what was in the.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you had read, read the, if you had read the warrant book before, you knew what he was gonna say.
Okay.
They also took a shot at, um, the committees and administrations' approach to collective bargaining in the context of COLA increases.
Yeah. Well, they shared that through their.
As compared to, uh, district, uh, I'm sorry.
Because they considered the district employees to be town employees.
Well, they, they shared that through their representative in the bargaining process. So we knew that. That's not a surprise.
Excuse me. I, I think it still needs to be, except, we, we knew Hamilton was gonna go easier than Wenham this year, go, leading into this. Excuse me. And we also know that over the past eighteen, twelve to eighteen months, as we've been discussing OPEB in more and more regularity, um, how complex of an issue it really is. And, you know, I, I don't think, I am far off at saying that, um, there's only, you know, probably a couple people at this table who even understand it in its entirety. And in trying to get that point forward to the town people and why it is so important for. why it is so important for us to start our investment now, I think that was very much lost. Excuse me. There was actually a member, a citizen that stood up and actually spoke on OPEB that was completely wrong in what they were talking about. And, you know, there was no support of trying to correct at that time. And I just thought that even, even though we didn't have a lot, the people in the room that we really wish we had in the, you know, that the parents of the school aged children, I also think that it was, that as a committee, we did not represent our budget well at all. I don't think that we did a good job of, of standing up and communicating why these things are so important and why the town should be voting in favor of these. And, you know, in the sense of OPEB is the sense that, excuse me, even though we're paying today, it's saving the district money in the future, lots, in lots of money. And that was definitely a loss. I think that, you know, I'm still hoarse from speaking at Saturday, but at times I definitely felt like I was on an island in defending this budget myself. And I really would have appreciated more support in trying to come up, you know, gaining support of the room and really trying to explain the budget we're putting forward, you know, our budget, again, that we all voted for unanimously to present, excuse me, in advance of Saturday's town meetings. And, you know, I just think that, you know, again, our work's not done. We still have to get this override in Wenham voted on and approved tomorrow. So, you know, while I don't think we did a good job at all in defending our position on Saturday, we still have twenty-three hour, twenty-three hours, forty-five minutes to make sure that word gets out to the towns and the voters to make sure that this override in Wenham gets voted through. Excuse me. That's really all I had to say. I don't know if anyone else has anything else to follow. Peter, I know it was your sort of first town meeting, so I'm curious, I never came to town meeting before I came, I became a school board member. And I know you were there at least last year, right, when you were interested in running. So I'm curious, it's sort of, where I was very curious, is Stacy being sort of, being through the most of these on the board, your perspective as sort of being, it being your first as a board member?
Well, it's clear that most citizens don't understand parliamentary procedure when it comes to town meetings and how you're voting and what we're voting on. And everyone kept demanding, can you clarify? Can you, can you just make this clearer? What are we voting on? There's confusion around that. You know, I'm still on a steep learning curve here, admittedly. I too was disappointed about the OPEB comments because I think they were, they were misinformed and that me being a resident of Wenham who's watched his taxes go up a lot in just the few years that I've been here and who believed that we need to find other sources of income rather than just property taxes. I voted for OPEB because I understood the benefits and the long-term savings of OPEB. You know, it's a minor investment now to save a lot of money in the future where it's, the five-two-nine analogy that was brought up was, was accurate. You don't wait, when you have a child, you don't wait till your eighteenth year to start saving for college. You start saving years ahead of time to pay it. Or you don't pay all the interest on your, on your mortgage at the end of the thirty-year mark. You start paying it early to end up saving money and build equity in yourselves. And that's how I see the OPEB. You start building up equity in yourselves and then you just start drawing off that equity, or in fact, not drawing from the equity, but it starts paying for itself and you stop making that payment in there. So I was disappointed in that comment that, and the fact that the money that was going into the OPEB and the fund that it was going into was very well researched, is very well stable. It's a, it's a rock-solid investment. It's not depending just on the whims of the stock market. It's, it's, it's a smart investment. So I was, yeah, I was, I was frustrated by that. In hindsight, I think as a school committee, if we had talking points, if we had all came together, this is what we need to put forward to advocate. These are the points we need to, to bring forward and had talking points, I would have happily gone up there and felt much more confident in what I, what I wanted to say and into that bumper sticker type of message out there.
I think that's great. But I mean, I think, and I want to sort of, I love what you just said, right? And I think the fact that you are new to this board really helped you simplify what you were just talking about, which is, I think, was really key and was missing on Saturday. And, you know, I wish you had this sort of confidence. I know it wasn't necessarily a friendly room, you know.
That doesn't, that wouldn't bother me.
But, you know, I wish you had sort of gone up and said what you just said because I really dislike what you just said. And I agree, I think the talking points would have been a good point, a good thing to sort of have distributed, you know. And again, we need to think about this for the next twenty, you know, twenty-four hours. And then just, again, you know, this is an annual thing, right? We need to sort of figure out what we can do to be better next time.
Right. Well, I'm saying it now.
I'm not saying that to you, because I'm saying that.
No, but people should understand that the OPEB is, is a smart investment now. And I'm not a fan of my tax, my mill rate. I've watched it go up. And I really do believe the town needs to find other sources of revenue besides property taxes. But I do believe the OPEB is a smart investment long-term. It's, it's creating a great legacy. It's, it's a smart investment. The residents will be grateful later on.
No, I think they will. You know, and it's unfortunate, because I was thinking about this the other day, when, when it comes to fruition, it's thirty years from now. I'm like, I don't even know if I'm gonna be alive in thirty years.
Right, but it's, that's not what we're doing.
So am I gonna see the benefits? But we have to understand that my children will, our children will.
Grandchildren.
So I just want to say, though, that, you know, the, OPEB is a complicated, complicated topic for sure, but there's still underlying fundamental, like, budget for the district, right? For teacher salaries, for curriculum and instruction materials, for sports activities, for all the other activities. I'm a little surprised that no one else felt compelled to at least speak to that, I have to say. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I was in Hamilton's last year where it wasn't, you know, Hamilton doesn't have as much of a challenge as Wenham does with regard to the, you know, base levy limit, but, you know, I spoke up, I had prepared marks for Saturday if I needed to.
There wasn't really an opportunity to speak, to support the budget because there was a motion made and the motion to move the money from the override into the budget became quite a confusing, it was confusing, people weren't prepared for it. And so there were, because there was so much confusion, there wasn't really an opportunity to speak. And when David asked me to speak, I did. So.
And then someone called for, to move, what was that, that procedure? They called for it to move forward without any more debate.
Yes, Jane, I share your comments.
Yeah, they called the question, yeah.
It seems like we're focusing on OPEB, which is a fraction of one percent of our budget. Where, where, where we really should be focusing is the fact that we don't even have a level service budget right now. And if that level service budget doesn't get passed, you're all familiar with how apportionment works, right? So if, if we don't get four-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand dollars in addition to the seventy-nine-thousand-dollar point-eight percent of an increase that was in their levy limit budget, that means that we have to subtract one-point-three-nine-million dollars from our operating budget. We're gonna have to gut this place to get to a balanced budget in the town of Wenham. That's how it works. For every dollar we cut, Wenham benefits thirty-five and a half cents, right? So we've gotta, we've gotta reduce.
Cut a lot more dollars.
We gotta cut a lot more dollars. So if you recall that list that we put up there on January thirtieth, it's that entire list of things, right? Which is very substantial. So I would encourage the committee to really rally around one another and to focus on the level service budget. And let's have a robust conversation about what our next step is with respect to that. Let's put OPEB to the side, even though it was, it's a very prudent thing to do. I think it would be in the best interest of the district to focus on a level service budget and how we're gonna get there. Fortunately, we're a regional school district and the statute allows for a very prescribed process, which thankfully is to our benefit at the moment. If we were in my town and a motion was made on the floor to cut the budget, the budget's cut because I live in a town, a traditional town and city. That's not, that's not in which the situation we operate, fortunately, right? So, you know, we've all put a lot of time and effort into this thing. We're all very passionate about this. I don't think a level service budget is out of, is unreasonable. You know, unfortunately, the dollar value of it is higher than we would like to see because of the drivers that we've talked about principally, you know.
The same ones Brad talked about.
Yeah, exactly. Those things, right?
The ones other towns we're dealing with.
But, you know, I, you know, we need, we gotta come together and we gotta focus on getting a level service budget approved, or this is gonna be a long, drawn-out process that's gonna take us into May and June and July and August. And we don't want to be there.
Yeah.
We do not, I think we could all at least agree on that. We don't want to be there.
And I don't know if anybody, as you said, David.
I don't know if there's anybody in these two towns who's been there before that wants to be there again.
Nobody's been through that kind of.
It's very real that we might be there, though.
Right.
Right.
And having it, you know, if it comes, yeah, it's not fun. I've seen the process. I haven't been a part of it. I have seen it and attended a hot summer town meeting because that's what we had to do at the time. But this time it's.
It can come to that.
Yeah.
Right?
So, so tomorrow, there'll be a vote. And then after that vote, we'll know the results. So if, if, when that passes tomorrow.
Fingers crossed.
Then all we need to address is a quarter of a million dollars. How we would either go back and ask for that again, or how we would remove that from our total budget.
Perfect segue.
Right.
Correct? Perfect segue. So our recommendation.
But also, I also believe that the ballots were printed, so we'll also have feedback on if people really did, who weren't in the room, maybe still supported that. I know we wouldn't have access to the money, but we would have an idea on whether or not we would be successful if we went back a second time.
Right. So if we can segue, let's segue. And Mike and I will kind of tag-team this together because it's very complicated. So what happened Saturday? Well, what happened before Saturday? What happened before Saturday was on March twenty-seventh, this group unanimously approved a budget. Everybody approved a budget. And that budget got brought forward to town meeting. And it was apportioned according to the regional agreement. And the town of Hamilton approved their, their assessment that was certified by the treasurer. Then we came to Wenham and we talked a little bit about what happened there, right? And what happened in Wenham, correct me if you think I'm wrong, but the town meeting appropriated everything but the eighty-nine-thousand dollars for the OPEB. Let's stick push OPEB to the side for a few minutes now. So they appropriated eighty-eight percent of the number that you approved, subject to an override ballot question tomorrow. Okay. So a little segue back into OPEB for a second. So the law, thirty, chapter thirty-two B, section twenty I, and I shared a copy of that with you guys, the only place and time a regional school district's OPEB trust fund can be funded is on town meeting floor. That is the only time. It was pulled out and specifically identified, it failed. So the only way we can go back and try to take a bite at the OPEB apple for either town is to take it back to town meeting floor. I don't recommend that. Right? So what I recommend is this group focuses on the level service budget, right? That's six-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-dollar number minus the eighty-nine grand, right? Which is roughly eighty-eight percent. So tonight, our recommendation is for this group, in advance of the ballot tomorrow, is to approve, and I will recertify, the level service budget for both towns. Okay? So when the time's appropriate, we can have that, you can have that debate and then you can do whatever you want to do.
That way, fingers crossed, the override passes tomorrow, we're done with the FY20 budget.
With the only exception being that the towns then have forty-five days, both towns have forty-five days to reconvene vis-à-vis a town meeting, which.
But they're not required to.
They're not required to.
And if they do not, the budget is considered approved.
Silence is approval. So that is the essence of our recommendation, is to set aside OPEB for a year, knowing what I just shared, and then focusing on what's most critically important to, and the preservation of this district, in my view, is a level service budget. I hope everybody would agree. And then focus on that. It needs to pass, it needs five affirmative votes, six of you.
Jeff, so what you're saying is you want us to do the motion tonight and then see how the results are tomorrow?
That's our recommendation.
I just want to verify that's what you want. Is this motion, then, you know, the vote and the assessment, so then, and then wait for the vote and that's, we're going with it?
No, that's not what he's saying. You're saying you want us to recertify so that no matter what the vote is tomorrow, if it fails, we're automatically going to a town meeting with the exact same budget, minus the OPEB.
Not necessarily.
So if we re-certify, doesn't there have to be a reconvening in Wenham?
No, that doesn't, that doesn't have to be.
How, how could they do it? Because they're, well, they would have to cut half a million dollars in order to cover ours.
Town meeting appropriated the four-ninety-nine, subject to a Prop two-and-a-half override.
Right.
If it passes.
It's still on the ballot for tomorrow.
Yeah, if it passes, everything's happy and we all go.
If it fails, we have a failed budget.
Fails, you have a failed budget.
A failed budget.
Everything's failed.
Right. But if we recertify it tonight as is, then that is our new recertified budget.
Which would fail at the.
That would go to a new town meeting.
Which would fail at the ballot tomorrow.
Which would fail. Or you could choose to recertify a different number.
So why would we recertify it tonight?
So if, so just also from my perspective, give you a little background, immediately following town meeting on Saturday, I went up and I spoke with various members of the FinCom because the other thing that probably doesn't get, wasn't clear on Saturday is the working relationship between the FinCom and the school committee, excuse me, and even though it could be at odds and we still actually are working together. And we were talking about this exact scenario. And they were in approval of it. And the thought process is if we certify tonight and it gets voted through tomorrow, or if we vote on it tonight and it gets certified and then voted through tomorrow, then it just takes care of itself. So it's done. If it, then if we vote on this tonight and it gets certified and then it gets voted down tomorrow, this is the budget that we're voting on tonight that is, that has failed. And then we'd have to reconvene and then create a new budget, whatever that process is. So.
So what is the purpose of voting tonight? I don't understand that.
So that we would have this budget ready to go where if it's certified, it's just done, right? So if it passes tomorrow, the school board, the new school board, in fact, would have to meet and then vote to certify the budget. And at that point, there could be anyone here, you know, anything could really happen. This is our budget, you know? And I don't know if this is my last day. I want this budget through. But, I mean, this is, it could be handled, it could be done again in twenty-four hours for the positive. And we just have our budget that, you know, we worked for on for the past six months minus the OPEB.
So the purpose for tonight is to vote down the budget to the level it would be without OPEB?
Correct.
The purpose of that is so that. The purpose of that is so that if tomorrow passes, we're just done. Because if tomorrow passes and we don't do that tonight, we still have to deal with that OPEB issue because it's left hanging. Is that what we're saying?
We would have to create, we would have to vote a new budget.
You'd have to.
Right, because our budget right now has failed.
You'd have to have the same conversation about a budget.
About an entire budget with potentially.
With a new school committee.
No, no, no. What I'm saying, if we vote tonight, what we're voting is to reduce by the amount of the OPEB. If it passes tomorrow in the, in the override, then that means we now have a budget that we've agreed upon and the towns have agreed upon. So the purpose for voting tonight is to remove the OPEB amount so that in the event that, well, when it is approved tomorrow, that everything is done.
Correct.
Yes.
So if we vote.
And it's not brought to a new committee possibly made up of three people that haven't gone through the cycle.
Right, right, right. And then, so if we vote tonight and tomorrow it doesn't pass, we can deal with both the OPEB and whatever ramifications we want to do but with regards to moving that budget forward in its same or new version.
Right, correct.
Okay.
In a different forum.
The other piece that, so on Monday, you know, in conjunction with calling council, they asked to work this, start working this through with the Department of Revenue and DESI, which we finally got word on today. I've also put in a letter with the commissioner notifying them that we technically have a failed budget and that we will most likely need the extra fifteen days that's also allowed in the law to extend the thirty-day period to forty-five. Because thirty days, I think is the first week in May.
It's May sixth, just to be, just to be safe.
Just to be safe.
Yeah, yeah. So we have forty-five days before we have to vote. And then from the time we vote, then the town has another forty-five days, so.
Actually hold another town meeting and then you're in, you know, July.
Yeah. And it could be difficult to get a quorum because we've changed, Wyndham changed their quorum from being a smaller number for a special town meeting to being the same for, and so it requires more people. So it's a little bit more challenging too.
But if you also.
But if we could never get a quorum, then it would be assumed that it passed. So I guess maybe that would be okay.
Not bad, yeah.
But if you also look at your schedule and the things on the agenda for the next two or three meetings.
It's tight.
There's not a lot of bandwidth, right?
Yeah, it might require, if it fails, it might require extra meetings.
Absolutely.
Multiple extra meetings, probably.
So, actually, I had a question for the Hamilton side. So Jeff and Mike, have you heard anything, knowing that Wyndham didn't pass the OPEB override in their, the OPEB warrant at their town meeting? Did you hear anything from the Hamilton side? Because I haven't heard anything from any, anybody.
I'll let them share their comments.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. I'm not, I don't feel comfortable.
But, okay.
Did you hear from them?
I watched the voters select a meeting.
You heard from them at the day, okay.
Mentioned it. I don't know, don't ask me why I watched the vote, Hamilton voters select a meeting, but that's what I did today.
Because you really wanna be a Hamilton resident. It's really what it is.
I lived in Hamilton for a little period of time.
Gene, there's a house for sale in your neighborhood, right?
But I, I think it's in our best interest, this is our budget, that we move to, to this new motion.
I agree. I agree.
And.
So if I could jump in right, so on page sixty-nine, so what we've done is we've, we've updated the deck and updated all the numbers. So I won't go through them again. You've seen these slides enough times. So what I've done is I've stripped out the full two hundred and fifty thousand for OPEB and restated all the numbers. So if you look at the financial statement page, which is the one you guys are pretty familiar with, I don't know what page that's on.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. So that number has been adjusted down, beginning at the top line by two hundred and fifty thousand and then trends late into the bottom in the assessment section where I take the ratios and apply them. So Hamilton's number is reduced by a hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and twenty-five. And then the infamous number in Wyndham that we heard a number of times on Saturday is the, it's been reduced by eighty-nine thousand, eight seventy-five for a total of two fifty. So the recommendation is, and then the next page is the, the DESI category sheet, which has been adjusted by the same amount. OPEB resides in the line that's called insurance retirement and other. So that's been adjusted down by two fifty and then the total by two fifty. And then what I've done is restated the motions for the new adjusted numbers, taking out OPEB. But just to be clear, the number that was appropriated by Hamilton, Hamilton, Hamilton Town Meeting must be reduced downward because that's how it works. But that's okay. So that's what we're recommending, that's what we've done. That's what we think is best to facilitate this thing to a quick and simple conclusion. Hopefully, the ballot question passes tomorrow.
You ready for a motion?
Right.
David?
Yes, please. Move that the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School Committee approves and fiscal year two thousand twenty total general fund expenditures budget of thirty-three million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. This amount includes general fund operating expenses after offsets in the amount of thirty-three million, five hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and general fund debt service expenses in the amount of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars. Furthermore, the gross operating expenses of the district before offsets have been allocated to the DESI-defined accounts according to the summary by DESI category chart included in this budget presentation dated four-ten-two thousand nineteen.
Second.
General vote or local?
Doesn't, I don't think the statute.
Doesn't matter. Just has to be two-thirds.
Just has to be five.
Just a regular. So if it's, if it's not unanimous, then you're gonna count them.
So, all right, just making sure. All those in favor?
I move that the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School Committee votes to assess the towns of Hamilton and Wyndham a combined total of twenty-nine million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars as amount necessary to operate and maintain the district as well as pay debt service for fiscal year two thousand twenty. The district's assistant superintendent shall determine the amount apportioned to each town and the district's treasurer shall certify such amounts to the respective treasurers of each town within seven day, seven days of this date.
Second.
All those in favor? So I'll try to recertify first thing in the morning, guys.
Thank you, Jeff.
And I'll let you all know.
Excuse me. All right. Up next, we're gonna discuss the MSBA SOI submissions.
So you have in the packet, first off, the submission for the, and the entire submission for the public school. And then starting on page forty-five is the required vote and the submission for the Winthrop school. Public school pretty much is the one that was submitted last year.
That's verbatim.
Some updates, but nothing, nothing really material could change.
So, first of all, I wanted to say, I do not, I've never felt so informed about how the buildings were built, insulated, wired, repaired. They're fascinating to me. But they look fabulous and I'm sure it was a lot of work to pull all of that together, especially, you know, because you're going through hodgepodge's of years and times and lots of times and stuff. So they're fantastic. And I think one of the things that I heard before the town meetings is that, you know, even people who aren't parents, they're realizing that there's things that need to be addressed within those buildings. So I think the community's coming to the point where they're kind of understanding this. But there's no way we can move forward without MSBA money. It's not practicable. So this is a great first step.
Yeah, I wanted to say that a great job. I read through both of them and looked at it. The one thing I looked, saw and I wasn't sure how, I guess I didn't realize it last year was, it says the minutes of the school committee meeting at which the vote was taken must be submitted with the original signature of the committee chairperson. So do we have to approve those minutes first and then he signs them and then sends it?
I spoke with MSBA today.
Yeah.
They actually said, and what we're gonna do is a preliminary set of minutes that I would have David sign tomorrow. It's really just actually this form of vote and a certification that the committee voted to submit and use this language on this date. And then after the minutes are, the official minutes are approved, then I have to mail them an official copy. But that won't happen till.
So we need to make sure that Mahala gets those minutes out so we can approve them at our next meeting.
Right. But I need, but these, they told me that you have to do, we have to do a preliminary set and they have to be postmarked by Friday, so.
That's, I just wanted to know because I saw, that was the first time I noticed that. I was like, oh, it said for regional school. And I just, I guess I didn't pay attention to that piece.
Yep. Because I asked him that question this morning because it was like, I know we won't have, we won't have approved minutes by Friday. But they said that's okay.
But yeah, I can tell there was a lot of work put into this. So I really appreciate both Jeff and Mike. And I know Jeff did a lot of the work looking.
Actually, this year, I, I didn't do anything.
Okay, Mike, you did a great job.
So we conquered and divi, I, I own the Winthrop Sprinkler project.
Okay.
And the bus transportation procurement and Mike took ownership of this.
Okay, thank you.
Every negotiation healthcare.
Thank you.
So.
Well, usually, I know last year you did it, Jeff, so that's why I thought. I give kudos. They look great. But Mike, you did a great job.
Thank you. All right. So what do we need to do right now, Mike?
You need to look at page twenty-two.
Okay.
In that box is the motion to submit the SOI for public schools.
And the whole thing needs to be read. Okay. Are we ready for that? Or does somebody wanna read over it first before I start that?
Resolve, having convened in an open meeting on April tenth, two thousand nineteen, prior to the SOI submission, closing date, the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School Committee, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated April third, two thousand nineteen, for the Cutler School located at two thousand, I mean, two hundred and thirty-seven Asbury Street, South Hamilton, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority seven, replacement or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. The physical deficiencies of the Cutler School, as outlined in the SOI, demonstrate that the building does not meet the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School District's minimum standards for accessibility and security. Furthermore, furthermore, the physical design of the Cutler School does not support the district's mission of providing an education that prepares all students for future success and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School Committee District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Okay, okay. Can I take a breath?
Boy. All those in favor?
No discussion.
Do we get a second, right?
We can second.
Did you want a question?
So the other thing I wanted to say that was brought up throughout this, which is really important. I liked the way that the SOI addressed the fact that because Cutler is not as accessible, that it's not only does it deprive the student who would need that accommodation, it also deprives all the students from participating with students who need accommodations. And it really highlights the importance of all of our buildings being accessible to students and the public. So I liked that a lot and I appreciated that you included that.
So I think going, going through there and taking a look at that's probably the most alarming deficiency of the building.
Yeah, it's one of the things that's definitely obsolete from, from, and it's been over, what, thirty years since those building requirements have been in place. So it's, yeah, it's a good thing. It's time, it's time to start addressing them. Yeah.
All right. So all those in favor? It's unanimous. So I think you have another one of these for you?
Yeah, it's on page twenty-five.
Can she say ditto?
Not and have them approved.
Pretty much the same.
Ditto. Ditto for Winthrop too. No.
Resolve, having convened in an open meeting on April tenth, two thousand nineteen, prior to the SOI submission, closing date, the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School Committee, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated April third, two thousand nineteen, for the Winthrop School located at three twenty-five Bay Road, South Hamilton, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for gory or gorries for which an application must be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements. The physical deficiency of the Winthrop School, as outlined in the SOI, demonstrate that the Winthrop School does not support the district's mission of providing an education that provides all students for future success. Furthermore, the building does not meet the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School District's minimum standards for security and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance of the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Board Authority.
Second.
All those in favor? Fantastic. Let's drop with those very wordy emotions.
So it's all electronic, a lot of the signatures are electronic. So tomorrow, you're gonna get a bunch of emails from MSBA requiring you to go and try and write your name with a mouse.
Okay.
David's really good with the mouse. He draws with it.
Did you, was this sort of already written in a little?
Most of the, yeah, boilerplate language with some blanks in it that you have to fill in. So yeah, it's a, it's a required form of vote that you're actually gonna certify tomorrow was that we, that the school committee voted their exact language.
Okay.
I do have one question. I know we vote, it has nothing to do with voting. I'm just wondering, who is a person who is the CEO? Is that, you are, but also superintendent of schools?
Yeah, so it's, it's, so the language is actually written for municipalities.
Yeah, okay.
So if, you know, if it was just the town of Ipswich, the town manager would be the CEO and the superintendent would be the superintendent. But where it's a regional district.
That's why I was trying to figure out, saying, because it was in Hamilton, then does a town manager do it? So that's what I was trying to figure out. Okay. I should have probably asked that before we did it, but.
Yeah, I went over it today with them too.
Yes, I read through the whole thing.
Who's gonna sign all of these? And I was, I said, I usually sign as the CEO. So she said, regional district, yes, that's right.
Well, I know that the first day I actually met Joe was during the Cutler walkthrough last year. And even though he was, I think, ten days on the job maybe at that point, he was right behind us. So if there was a signature we needed from him, it would be.
They don't need it, it doesn't need to be from.
No, there's no.
Because it's a regional school district. If that was to come up, then it wouldn't be an issue.
We're, we're an autonomous municipal unit. Yeah, we don't, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. I know how much work that is, you know, to put together and, you know, again, how important it is.
Hopefully get a good call next December, yeah?
I mean, we're gonna have a job opening. I mean, we're going to have a job opening that we're going to post in a year or so, you know, if we have a new school coming in, you might want to come back, so.
All right, let's wrap this up. Uh, we've got donations.
I move the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee accept the donation from the Hamilton Wyndham Little League for the amount of ninety-seven hundred, and I, to improve the Little League fields.
Is it ninety-seven or ninety-six? The letter says ninety-six.
There's one for ninety-seven, and one for ninety-six.
Ninety-seven hundred is, um, Hamilton Wyndham Little League. Ninety-six hundred is for Iron Tree. Okay, gotcha.
And is that for here, right?
Yeah, so there are two fields at Buickor and one field at Winthrop.
That's pretty awesome.
Fantastic, so, so do we maintain those fields, or does the rec board maintain those fields?
I'm like, way down that.
We own them, so we coordinate who maintains them, so.
But they stripe them and all of that, or do we stripe them?
So it's a combination of things, but this, this, this proposal is for, you know-
Yeah, just getting it done.
Yeah, for these, these three entities to do a tremendous amount of work.
Yeah, and-
Not, you know, not, not just strapping, but-
And is it just not needed at Cutler? Is that why we, it's, or they just didn't offer to do it at Cutler, or?
That's a good question, because they were second. So I'm actually coaching with the Little Vests this year, who's the president of Little League, and I can bring that up to him, but I know that he was really excited when he found out that it was on the school committee telling me that, um, that they wanted to do this and really invest in our fields. I'm like, dude, you're awesome.
Yeah, the Cutler Field, we, we play softball there, so it's, you know, it's in a better condition than the, the two fields that are in this, in this, um-
I mean, it's a local dad, you know, this is nice.
Second?
So all those in favor?
Okay. I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee approve, um, accept the donation from Iron Tree Service for ninety-six hundred to also improve the Little League fields. Thank you, both of you.
Second?
So all those in favor? Those Iron Tree guys are pretty good guys, too.
Obviously, they're all working together, right? Those are multiple entities, and they'll work under the coordination of our office, so, yeah.
That, that's awesome.
You know, they have to provide certificates of insurance and all those kinds of things, so.
So topics for next meeting?
I have a real quick question. Did we ever get a response, or did Naomi send the response for the OML from last meeting?
She did.
Yeah, she sent it out.
Okay, 'cause, okay.
Excuse me? Uh, that, so that would be, I'll forward it, I thought, um, should we forward it?
I hadn't seen anything, so I just wanted to make sure.
I just, I just saw my emails, I actually didn't even-
And then also, for next meeting, if we're doing the same meeting for accounting certification and meeting, should, um, someone also make sure that, um, the registrar or clerk come and-
Both clerks are on call, they're, they're waiting.
So you did that, Mike, already? Okay, thank you. And the last, I guess, issue is that I had with, um, the sports transportation, I don't know if we want to have Craig come in and discuss, or, you know, to move that forward, because I know coaches have been asking and trying to, you know, are the, is there alternatives, or is there really that much of an issue for transportation? I just, I mean, I know-
I think Craig was going to come to a policy meeting at some point in the future, and that had been pre-scheduled in May sometime, right?
Yeah, we don't have a policy meeting until May twenty-something, I want to say.
Does he, does he know to come to that?
No, but I'll let him know. Thirteenth?
Yeah, I don't remember, I wrote it down in case I was going.
No, it's May sixth.
May sixth. I mean, it's not going to happen for this season, is ultimately what the answer is.
Okay, so I can forward that to some of them.
Yeah, because it's just, there's just too many thorny issues, and, and even when we discussed it, I think we were pretty much in agreement that we felt that it was not really for team sports necessarily, unless the team was something like the wrestling team, and it's like, three kids or something like that.
I might throw it out to listserv just to see what other people have, if they've had issues, and if they've done alternatives, what their solutions were.
A really good solution would be have some fields at our own site.
Hopefully.
Just saying. Add an open, oh, uh, what's that? Maybe some courts.
And courts.
And some singer, single payer healthcare. That's on my Christmas list to Santa.
Lauren, anything you'd like to bring up?
Big stuff over here. Oh, we just had junior prom on Friday, and then senior prom's in like a month. Fun end-of-year activities. Um, not anything crazy is happening in student government, we're doing a food drive for a court that's being run by Max and Timothy, which I've, you've probably heard about.
Well, have, have you guys heard about it?
What's that?
Did you guys hear about it?
The food drive at the high school. Um, just two students from the special ed department are running a food drive, making announcements every morning, and they've gotten a lot of donations, I think it's ending Friday.
Something in the paper about that, right? It's actually a local story?
Yeah, the online, like, the school newspaper did that, um, which student government has been helping with. If anyone has any questions about things going on, kind of just the usual. Do you know who the beneficiary of the food drive will be? Um, a court. I'm sorry? Was the question who the beneficiary? Who's getting the food from the food drive? Um, a court food pantry. I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry. A court. Oh, okay, thank you. A court food pantry, makes sense now.
For the, for the next meeting, also, can we put on, um, the nomination of the ed fund as the, like, friend of education for the MASC award?
All right, I didn't even see that.
You got a long list on it, it's on your board.
I know, but I think that's going to go like, should we just do it? Should somebody write it? Yes, go.
What else is up, what else is on there for the trade with? Town election, organization officers.
First off, we got here results of town elections, we have reorganization of the school committee, so election of officers, uh, reorganization of subcommittee, uh, school committee, school liaison assignments, um, review the goals, um, to start talking, review the school committee goals and talk, start talking about new ones. Uh, you also have, uh, select the interim superintendent semifinalists on the list for that. Uh, we have an F, we have FY nineteen financial forecast, we have an FY twenty budget placeholder in case we need to.
That's probably a good plan.
And then nominate the ed fund for-
I don't know, it's like friend of education, MASC, I don't, yeah, I'll look up the real name and-
And I have, not for next meeting, but for May, um, David?
Yes.
MASC resolution, if we have anything, that, um, we, they need it by June first, a month earlier, so if we want to think about a resolution for MASC.
We probably should, like, think about some of the-
We could push that to May, though, right?
So I'm not saying for next meeting, I'm saying like, May, because we need it for June first, they want it a month earlier this year. So I'm for those.
Depends on how many, how many there are who applied.
Yeah, but how long will that take?
How is that, how, how are we getting that information? Are we having Glenn send it to us, or?
All, all of the material that's in, in connection with your review on the twenty-fourth has to be included in the packet and has to be public.
Right.
Because you didn't opt for a subcommittee.
Well, also, because we couldn't, but, um, I think we're supposed to redact their addresses, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, yeah, okay.
But Mike's, so I'm raising it because, is David still, is there a chair still?
There won't be until-
No, there won't be, they don't, you won't have a chair until the meeting on the-
Right. Twenty, is it fourth?
But Mike is not involved in the search, so.
Well, Gene, no matter what, would still be vice chair until then.
And can he serve in the, in place, yeah.
I only bring it up because somebody on this, the committee has to coordinate that part of it for the next meeting.
And what do you mean by coordinate? Get it to Donna?
Yeah, because, because MASC's doing it.
Right, yep, yep, so somebody has to get all of the documents to Donna, so is Stacy working with?
I've, I've been working with the MASC, so-
What's his face, um, David?
Sorry, that's rude. Gene, David?
Glenn Kuchar. What's his face?
I've been working with MASC, so do you want me still do it, or do you want me to forward it all to you?
Forward it to me if you don't mind.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll send it to the, um-
You give it to Donna Bond.
Yeah, I have to do it to Donna.
So Gene, just as a reminder, so the Friday, the deadline for, is, is Good Friday, and Donna won't be there.
Right.
So the posting closes on, close of business Thursday, the eighteenth, and no one will be there until-
The twenty-second.
Yeah, so maybe, so maybe he, she, maybe she should get what's available on Thursday, and then if anything extra comes in, we would know.
Well, that would be at the end of business, so.
I just raised the issues.
Yeah, no, that's, and it's, because it's a holiday, yeah. Thank you for looking ahead at that.
Sorry, so resumes are being sent to MASC?
And so those should be available.
So it's packets of information, right? In, in the, so it's resumes, it's cover letters-
It's not just Glenn Kuchar, it's also Dorothy.
It's references, so you're going to get ten to fifteen pages probably for each candidate, I would suspect, having read the posting.
So for all of you kids out there thinking about going into education, those transcripts come back to haunt you and for the rest of your lives, just be good. It always blew my mind, I was like, really, you want to know what I did twenty years ago? All right, fine.
All my, all my higher level transcripts are great, it's, don't ask from my high school, maybe not my undergrad. All right, so that's, that's it. So I want to make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Oh, do you want the motion?
I can't make the motion.
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School, the committee adjourned at nine- Oh, seven.
Second?
All those in favor? Unanimous.